Okay, so now I'm gonna turn it on. Okay, I'm starting the recorder. Hey Jen, I do have that. That agreement that you wanted done to sign.
Oh, I updated it.
Oh, cool, okay.
I lost that one.
Toss it.
Alice is gonna be here?
Oh, yes, yes she is.
Tick tock. Okay, I'll call this Mercer County Special Meeting to order and we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, on a nation of under armed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Jamie, second?
Yes.
Any further discussion here? None? Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye.
We have Eliza. Did she mention anyone if she was gonna be here or not?
I didn't talk to her, so...
I talked to her at San Francisco, but I didn't ask if she was coming, you guys.
Zoning case 221101, final plot approval, L.A. H8. Yep, I understand. Travis? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
The only question I have for Travis, he had two, is like, you had informed me once, but it was, we have a plan for the weeds. That was one question I had from other, the retention or detention, I'm not sure what kind of pond it is.
Detention.
Detention.
Yeah.
Okay, that pond, if there was weeds and stuff, there's a plan in place for, if there's weeds and, you know, things.
Yeah, there's an easement agreement that incorporates the Water Resource Board as kind of the liaison, and then it's between all the landowners that are affected. So that will be recorded with it as well.
Well, I think you had mentioned too about if, if the weeds weren't addressed, if there was a postal contractor or some after a week or 10 days or something.
Yeah, if the detention pond isn't being properly maintained, there is a notice period, which I think it's either a week or 10 days, and then if there's no response by the development, then they can hire a contractor and send it to the, to the development. And that's in easement agreement before the drain tiling system.
And who's doing that and who's enforcing that?
I believe it's the Water Resource Board.
Water Resource Board, okay. Just so we know when it's not being done. Who starts this process of enforcement?
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed.
I got the plaque here, so Jean, after the meeting, could you sign it?
Myron and Carrie were just walking in, too. We just missed it.
They told me, oh, I was gonna say they weren't gonna be able to make it. Here they are. Okay.
It's been approved.
They're passed, so.
Yeah.
We don't need, no further discussion. Okay?
Okay.
I'll decide this, you guys all.
I'll have this to you.
Myron and Carrie, where, Myron, Carrie? Done, it passed. That, yeah, you're a minute late. Okay?
Thanks for calling over again.
Thank you. Next, road superintendent. Okay, road superintendent, assistant road superintendent wages. Basically, what this is though, is to assign a road superintendent and an assistant road superintendent.
Well, it's not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay. I stand corrected. So these are just the wages that... Now, Elroy has not been officially assigned road superintendent, has he?
He was booked to him on the 21st of August, and he would accept it if his wage was at eighty-nine thousand a year.
Okay.
When we stopped there and did it with him, we offered him eighty-five thousand. That's what we had discussed at the meeting.
And that's what was advertised.
That's what we, we took there, so. And that's what he countered with.
It's still...
Well?
And I guess the other thing is like to explain that a little bit more, what's on here, was current, current wage savings was about twenty-four ninety-seven forty-eight according to Alex's records, but it was like, we would like to see according with visiting with Elroy too is Dennis would be more of a mechanic assistant slash assistant or assistant slash mechanic, but it would be, he would stay in the same role, but he would fill in for the extra pay that he's getting, and we would not be hiring an assistant. Just a regular assistant.
Just an assistant, like this would be like a dual role essentially.
So that's why the savings would be one less position at this time. Is that correct, Alice?
Correct. So if you look at the bottom, the total savings, if you would bump Elroy to eighty-nine thousand, it's still a savings from what was budgeted for the road superintendent of twenty-four ninety-seven. The requested wage from Elroy for Dennis's wage would be thirty-six fifty-two is what Elroy was earning when he was the interim road superintendent. So, plus he would not be hiring to replace Dennis, so that'd be another savings, so the total savings would be seventy-two thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. Now, that does not include overtime, FICA, or any of that. That's just the wage part.
Right now, I have it calculated that with the three dollar an hour, Elroy's making about eighty-one five.
Correct.
So this'll go to eighty-nine, so like a nine thousand dollar pay raise over about the thirty-six that he was making.
No, 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 Elroy was making thirty-nine.
Right.
But then you, did you factor in the overtime, because I thought he was closer to like eighty-three or eighty-four?
Correct. Because he had overtime before, he wasn't salaried before.
According to our wage charts that we have, I thought it was closer to eighty-three or eighty-four, like eighty-three something, but maybe that was with the dollar fifty raise, I guess.
Okay, so for the discussion here, the proposal, the requested is eighty-nine thousand for Elroy. Do we want to do the separate?
Jean, so this way, I'll do, I'll make a motion to make Elroy our road superintendent with the salary of eighty-nine thousand.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, Rick? Okay, discussion? This eighty-nine thousand then is going to be next, also next year's salary, not another dollar and fifty an hour raise come January 1.
I think that that hasn't been discussed. That hasn't been discussed.
We could do that, I guess.
But I don't know if he would accept that, just to be honest with all of you.
So right now, we have a pro, proposed dollar fifteen an hour?
Yep.
Yeah, so that's another three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Plus eighty-nine thousand, that would be ninety-two one twenty.
I think if you're comparing apples to apples, then you would have to add that also to the ninety-one, four ninety-seven and two.
How many employees is our in the road department? Sixteen?
Is that correct?
Correct. And you also have to understand that you will not be replacing one of those employees either, so you'd be down one.
What's that?
You'd be down one employee because he wouldn't be hiring for, to replace Dennis.
Yeah, but in the same year, he's going from thirty-six fifty-two an hour, which was about seventy-five thousand a year, to eighty-nine thousand, plus then wanting to get another dollar fifty pay raise. I just, I don't know. I guess I'm being facetious by saying we're just handing out pay raises like they're... Every time someone does something a little extra, we're just handing out more money.
So when you compared the population, tax values, and staffing level, what are those compared to?
Um, population, the average was ninety-seven thousand, tax value was eighty-eight thousand, and staffing level was eighty-eight thousand.
Yeah, I see the numbers, but what are those compared to? Like, what counties or what?
Um, that'd be like McLean County, Montreal County. Let's see, I should've wrote it down, I'm sorry, but they're all the counties that I did for the wage scale as well, that are pretty comparable to Mercer County in those categories.
Was Dunn in there?
No, because their taxable value is way higher than ours, population is lower, and their staffing level is lower. And their wages are way more than ours, because they're covered by oil taxes.
What do you want to do is eighty-nine thousand for the twenty-five budget also?
Well, that's mine, but the rest of you commissioners gotta decide.
I guess I would.
I'm a stingy old German.
I wouldn't disagree with that.
I mean, I, I can support an increase, but with what Jean's saying, I mean, I know it's a new, it's a different position, but I mean essentially if, if you're at eighty-nine thousand, just kind of compare it by hourly, that's forty-two seventy-nine roughly, so it's a little over a six dollar an hour raise from where he was two months ago. So as the motion said, it was eighty-nine thousand, right? Didn't have any of the other stuff in it?
No.
May the motion to include twenty, for twenty-five budget then too?
Well, there's a couple ways we can do it. We can leave it at eighty-nine, and then when it comes to the final budget, like October 2nd, you could say that that salary stays at eighty-nine for the year of twenty-five. Anyway, any more discussion? So right now, it's, basically the motion was to, read back the motion, please.
Well, make Elroy the road superintendent at the wage of eighty-nine thousand.
Correct. That's, yep, that's the motion. Okay, any further discussion on that? Hearing none? Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed.
I would have Alice reach out to him, and if that's an issue, then it can come back to us next week.
Um, Dennis?
I feel like we shouldn't act on Dennis until we get a response from Elroy, personally. That's up to you guys.
I hear what you're saying. We should see if Elroy accepts before we.
I personally think that, just because otherwise, then we have to go back, we may have to go back and start all over again, and it's not that I don't support this for Dennis, I just think we need to start at step one before jumping to step two. That's up to you guys.
I do not disagree with Jamie's proposal, idea. That's correct. So we could, um...
I think we could just add it to the agenda for next week.
I was gonna say we can table it, not table, postpone it till next meeting. Pending hearing from Elroy. Yeah.
One other question before we do that. This was to be retroactive August 21st.
I did look at the bottom of that.
Correct.
I mean, it wasn't in the motion, but...
That's when he was offered the position.
Right.
I'm not sure how we can, I'm not sure what I feel about that, because he hasn't accepted the position, and so what if he doesn't accept the position?
Well, that wasn't part of the motion.
It wasn't, I understand.
To raise it to eighty-nine, but the motion did not say retroactive to August 21st, or August 1st, or what is it?
August 21st.
21st.
So, but that is, is that the start of the new pay period or for the old pay period? Because that would've been about the break of pay periods.
That was the day that we stopped and when we, after our meeting that we stopped and offered him the job. And that was the conversation we had, the conversation.
That was also the day you made the motion.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just saying, like...
So we want to, how do you want to fix it?
I don't know if it's necessarily fixed, I'm just saying, like, if it's accepted, then that might be the time to make it retroactive.
Okay.
I just don't want us to forget that part of it.
You're correct, even that, that's for sure. Then let's, let's add it to the, after an exception, then.
So right now, we'll, we'll wait on Elroy's response to the eighty-nine, and as far as what date that becomes effective, that'll be decided later. That wasn't part of the motion, so sorry if we
Nope, that's okay.
Didn't incorporate that. I didn't. I didn't think of a retroactive date. I was thinking it'd be like effective today.
I didn't know why I didn't bring it up. I'm sorry.
Pardon?
I, I brought thought about it, but I don't know why I didn't bring it up. I'm sorry. It's right on the bottom of the page too, suggest retroactive back to eight twenty-one for both.
Oh, okay, I did not, sorry.
Did he ask for that, or was that just something you recommended, Alice?
He asked for it. Him and Dennis.
Well, it can be discussed again, I think.
I don't, I don't have it. Well, the motion's passed. I mean, if you wanted to make a separate one, that's fine. I'm just stating that that was part of the request.
If we make a motion to upon acceptance.
My only prob, not my only problem, but, so if we do the 21st, that's four days of a pay period with a different weight, like, I would almost be more comfortable with whatever our new pay period, but like, back to starting tomorrow or Wednesday, like whatever day the new pay period starts. Or Gwen can figure out four days of pay at the new rate.
Yeah.
Easily done either way.
Right, she can do it, it's just what.
No, I know.
Right, it would just be like back pay, so it'd be like...
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
I'm gonna like to make a motion then that we, if Elroy accepts the position, we pay retroactive back pay to eight twenty-one twenty-four. Don't worry about Dennis's name to get there. If somebody wants to second it, if not, we'll, we'll move on.
I'll second it for discussion.
I'm scribbling real fast here.
Yeah, I was, I was letting you read.
Okay, I got it. Rick made the motion to make this pay retroactive to eight twenty-one and twenty-four. Travis seconded that. Is there any discussion?
That's if accepted.
Carrie, hearing no further discussion. Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Doesn't matter, I want to vote.
Jean, before you adjourn, are we, what are we doing with next week's meeting?
With what?
Next week's meeting. Can I put the road soup salary proposal underneath other business? Don't want a time on that.
Okay.
Can you? Do a time for me, please, so I know when to come in.
We'll, okay.
Okay.
I'll do this around. Okay, beans, there's no further discussion on this meeting. This meeting will be adjourned.
Nine nineteen.
Okay, now we'll call another special meeting to order. And this one is the October 2nd meeting.
Okay, shall we meet on October?
October 2nd meeting. All right, Jamie, your question? Now we can have, discuss that. As far as I know, the meeting will stay October 2nd.
Why did you want, we want to change it?
I'm not gonna be here October 2nd.
Oh. Yeah, but after looking into it, we have the bid opening, we have the public hearings that've been advertised on tax statements, and basically, it would be, it would not be a good time to, to switch that. And if, if we wanted to have another special meeting for budget approval, which I would suggest, we would do that on the 2nd.
There's gonna be more than one anyway, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, and I dropped the ball on this one. I knew about this a month ago already, and I should, and I kept forgetting to bring it to the attention, so. That's fine. I just won't be here October 2nd.
Okay, and then I'm gonna get, we're working on getting all the updated data to you guys Friday. And then you'll have something to look at, and we go from there. Because I want you guys to be able to see it before, and then ask a question.
Based on history, there might be a couple more meetings after October 2nd. But, who knows? You guys might have it all done on the 2nd, so, we'll see. All right? Uh, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, that meeting's adjourned, or this meeting's adjourned. Gotta be careful what we bring up during them.
Well, it's on the bottom of the bud, or of the agenda, so it's not like it wasn't advertised.
So.
And it's on registered statements. Yes.
Yeah, and Jean, stop by the office, there's a couple things Mark has you decide. Can I run, I wanna run and talk to you.
Talk to what?
I wanna talk to you really quick, it'll be like five minutes. I wanna just go through something I found on the board.
Something that we can need a change to do? I need to go get, I need to get some papers. [door opens]
Gene?